I'd actually go in there and then an in-person orientation.
Ronnie, you enjoy watching your yardarts last night?
And I got a lot.
I agree, I don't think they know.
The in-person one.
I was telling them, like, follow the bar. They walked me around. I mean, they kind of.
Yeah, we're not saying what it was.
Not as exciting.
No.
They might have second-year ones.
Yeah.
I saw that, I was like, yep.
I know, when they just showed us it, I used to tell them, I thought it was like a tech card. It was crazy.
Yeah, I did love it a lot of fans.
They managed to let through a lot of breaks.
Yeah.
A lot of breaks.
Oh, yeah.
We live yet? Probably, yep.
Did I ask her to come in that? Let's go with the limo.
Oh, I was tired, but it was good. I think I've been on for like forty-four hours or something. After doing all this snowing week, I'm like, it's normal to work on my. I was exhausted, but I could not rehearse anything.
Right. Didn't she have fun? She think that limo was really too cool?
Yeah, she thought it was cool.
You can sleep when they're grown, then.
That's what I was saying.
Nick, where are you fishing at today?
Farm pond within one mile of River City.
That's a little bit more than I'd expect.
Yeah.
I wouldn't go there anyway.
I can't say on Facebook Live, everyone's gonna be in my face.
Technically, it's a private property.
Hopefully, we get a bunch more. We're taking them all to the Iowa burn rehabilitation. It's in Des Moines, it's out of like a house, so it's running in. Take all the little ones, we're not gonna eat it since it's so populated, if we don't want it, just throw them away. We already got enough bait, we'll have to find something good to do.
This is where it's hard, waiting for the time. But it's like, we're all here, are we all here though?
The airport, I don't know, it's a place where you can wait till your kid is walking down. They have a circle like fourteen times, we're just at the parking lot. Works out pretty good. It says no parking right here, but.
Oh, do I? I feel like I had them though. I mean, maybe not there, but I feel like I've had such a beast before.
Phenomenal.
I'm sure. For sure they want to stop, yeah. I think I offered at the very beginning, how it works actually, early, early in the year. Something pretty great, like a peanut butter jelly sandwich at dinner, really. And they're not even open, I can go to the store after the Monday. I hope so. We gotta get through it, it's gotta be covered, I should have put this back a couple weeks.
Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the Mitchellville City Council, regular meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Calvin.
Here.
Willamette.
Here.
Walder.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Hoover.
Here.
Mayor Murrow.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is approval of the tentative agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Calvin.
Yes.
Walder.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Walder.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Calvin.
Yes.
Angela.
Meet first, huh?
Right off the bat.
Alright. So Angela Bosworth, Calvin, Henley Brad's house. It's 304 Center Avenue South. And I'm here because I'm requesting that the council design a plan to deal with overages. And by dealing with overages, I mean specifically, let's come up with a plan that says if a user or a resident says, hey, I don't know where this overage came from, why is my bill four hundred dollars and whatnot? There could be a lot of reasons, but the first thing they're gonna think is something's wrong with the equipment, something's wrong with the system, something was read wrong, nothing was running in my house. So I'm asking that the council develop a plan that's gonna hopefully help the resident feel assured that what information they're getting has been double-checked, and in more of a way than just rereading the meter, which sometimes helps. But I'm also asking that because it'll help the city too, because the city has to deal with irritated people. So I'm asking for this to be something that is designed with the help of the creators of the reading machines, any billing software, the meters themselves, and here's why. I'm asking for that because I do some tech support work as a part of my job. One of the things I know for an absolute fact is that there is things that go wrong with these. There's problems that can be troubled, shoot, you can do troubleshooting for some of the problems, there's errors that come up commonly, whatnot. So if we can develop a plan and then assure people, okay, you call in, you say, I'm sure nothing was running, I'm sure I didn't leave anything on, I don't have a toilet leaking, before they go to the expense of calling a plumber, you can say, whoever takes the phone calls for water can say, okay, then we have this process, we're gonna check A, B, C, D, and E, and with absolute certainty, we can tell you, it's not the meter, it's not the software, it's not this, it's not that. And then the resident feels confident that, hey, something must be going on in the house. So another reason that I ask for this is because it's costing the residents money, but it's also costing us as a city money. And we want to help all residents, and we know that people can't afford exorbitant bills, but they're coming before you asking for reimbursement for things because they don't feel confident in the system. So I think that if we put a system in place, if, you know, they go steps A through E, or whatever it is, and that's all confirmed, then that also gives some standing to say like, hey, I know something's going on, and maybe here are some other resources in the community that you can reach out to for help, but we know that we checked this. And I would like it to be a very transparent plan as well. Something that people know so they can feel assured. And this will protect all of us, and it'll protect the city as a whole. So that's what I'm asking for.
Ronnie, you kind of have a breakdown mentally of all the process we go through every time this happens. Do we have it on paper anywhere?
No, but it would be hard to put it on paper.
Do you wanna just write up kind of an SOB, and we go from there? And then that way, we have an outline that we can follow, and that we can show everyone we follow. I think it's pretty easily doable.
Well, and I'm sure that Ronnie knows, I mean, that's what she does, I'm sure she knows. But the reason that I say I specifically requested to include experts in this, Ronnie's an expert here locally, but again, because I know for one hundred percent certainty, there's ways to troubleshoot everything related to technology. So if we make sure that we have the latest information on troubleshooting, and we've consulted with the makers of billing software, the makers of the, all of the water, um... Scanner. The scanner, yeah. If we, the meter reader and the meter itself, then we know that, hey, we have literally exhausted all of our, aside from taking the meter out every single time and putting a new one in, we've exhausted everything that we can do. So I would really like that to be something more than just, here's the steps we do. I would like it to be something that's a really defined process using expert. Like, I mean, the users of my system couldn't say that they could define a process for troubleshooting. They can do their process there locally, but they don't know what I know. So they can't define a troubleshooting process for the systems that I support using their information. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I don't think I'm gonna go right to these developers when I have no plan or no paper of what we do. I think the first step would be writing down our processes, and then identifying where we need to contact those experts and what information to put.
Yes, that's totally, I just wanna make sure that there is like that consultation for, and I don't mean like, call them up on the phone, let's have a two-hour Zoom conversation or anything like that. Just like, hey, this is our plan, is there any troubleshooting steps we could do? All of them have customer support, I'm a hundred percent certain of it. So I mean, like, there are ways to just confirm that our process is right, we're not missing any troubleshooting that we could be doing based on a system that we may not even know about.
Hey, it's great.
Ronnie, do we still hand out dye that people can put in their toilet and see if the seal's not, flapper's not flapping right?
We do. And I think this is great to put on paper. My problem, though, is most times it is the meter, and there is no way to troubleshoot a meter other than replacing it. They're not, we don't have any control over them at all, it's literally put it in or take it out. We can't do anything with it. We can get them tested, um, our system is...
But after we take it out.
Right, our system is bannion, and they're great with customer service, they're one of the four that people in Iowa use, and they're the only one that actually either answers your call right then when you call them, or calls you back within an hour. But I, we have not had any issues with any calculations within our system. Our troubleshooting usually comes more when an update doesn't download properly, so we call them and they're able to remove it. Now, Paul, Bree, and myself are having a sit-down with the meter company next Thursday, our person there, so that we can talk about updating our reader and our handheld, because we, they're so old that now there's no real more updates that you can do to them. So we have our, we have started that process as well.
An interesting note is, we had an individual who had had heavy usage at a previous house, and came here and asked for a refund at her own house this last month. She had a high water bill, high usage, and she actually called Mr. Huska, and he went over there and found a leak in her brand-new toilet that she swore up and down did not have a leak. He said, "Brand-new toilets, we're not even living here, we're not using them." And Mr. Huska found a leak in a brand-new toilet, so this is generally where it's gonna be.
Let me clarify too, that my reason for asking for this isn't because I think the city, Ronnie, anybody, our public works guys, anybody is doing anything wrong. My goal is, if everybody is assured that A through E has been checked and covered, then they know that they have, nobody's gonna go around grumbling because, oh, the city's messing up the whatever, that type of thing. They're like, hey, no, the city checked all of these things, there's, you know, nothing outside of that, it's gotta be me, my house, my toilet, my whatever. So that is my point. My point is assurance so that people know and feel really confident. Because I feel like people don't feel confident whether that's correct or not, whether it's anything on the city's part or not. So I just wanna clarify that, that's, my intention isn't to say Ronnie doesn't know what's going on. My intention is to say, if we have a defined plan, and we say that experts have been involved, nobody can say anything about it, because we followed the plan, it's very transparent, so.
I think it's a good idea, I mean, I don't think it would hurt absolutely anything for me to create a, somebody call, I call City Hall with a high-water use, what are my next options for recourse?
At what point do we need to contact customer support? At what point do we need to advise them to get a plumber, instead of just, oh, well?
Well, calling a plumber should be the last, but I think, and I think, um, because we had talked previously about me wanting to do a frequently asked questions, I think number one, which is already written on my list, is, what is my water bill for? Because yes, it does say, you know, your February bill is for your January usage, which people don't always remember that. So in January, when they call us freaking out and say, oh, high-water bill, we tell them, it was for December. Oh, well, we had ninety-four family members over for Christmas, well, that's extra flushes, extra washing hands, that's gonna cause a high bill. So I think all that information is helpful to get it out there on the website, which I was playing with earlier.
I appreciate it, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we got Wendy Hansen.
Hey, well, I'm not really here to save the world, I'm just here for her personal request. Um, if you guys don't mind, I do have some freshers for you to, if I can round out, I think I printed off enough. I'm just trying to get an exemption to the agricultural animal in city limits, and in fairness, I didn't really realize I was in city limits when I purchased my home, and my realtor informed me that I wasn't, so. Um, all we're trying to do is get a miniature horse, and we have one and a half acres, and as you can see from the area circled in pink on the front page, that is our property. It's all completely surrounded by woods. And the one neighbor that isn't completely blocked by the woods, we do have a privacy fence. I have, also on the second page, I have a signed letter from all my direct contact neighbors saying that they are willing to let us, allow us to have this, if you guys are, and nobody really has a problem with it, and they're all actually kind of excited about it, and they just wanted me to show you guys a picture of him so you can see how big he is. He's at the ARL currently, he's been fostered since July, he's eighteen years old, and he's been neglected. So we're just trying to give him a good home. Um, he's about the size of a Great Dane. As you can see, he's not a real big dog, and I know there's probably been somebody here in the past that has probably ruined this, or put some bitter taste in someone's mouth along the way, because there's always that person. So I am here to answer any questions or concerns that you guys might have.
And would you have any thoughts and wishes?
Well, the last request for the go-to town was denied. I know that, you know, bringing livestock into the city limits isn't what I don't think we've been wanting to do, generally. I feel bad that your realtor didn't realize the city limits, where they were selling homes.
Yeah, we used to not kind of mind you kind of think you're getting the truth, but, you know, hey, live and learn. I mean, I guess, is there a major concern, since I am supposed to not being in the city limits, and it's completely surrounded by woods, and do you have that much area?
The last request we got was from somebody very close, in another situation where their neighboring agricultural land. But I think we've set a precedent where we're not approving those requests at this time. Unless anybody would like to take any action? Sorry, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Olivia.
So I'm here to talk about your water main project. Um, in October, the board was simmering in quarry, and Justin, simmering in quarry, submitted your grant application for this water main replacement project. Now, CDBG grants have been very competitive, they've had a lot of applications. They actually closed their January submission, didn't want anyone to submit, because they had so many applications. That's why we found out a few weeks ago, it's him, he helped bring me both, that we were not awarded this last round. He reached out to CDBG and got feedback from them. It seems that their concern, and I've got two quickers here, is what we've been working on. It's in black, and I can leave this for you. This is all the water main we're planning on replacing in this phase. And CDBG's feedback, what they thought, with in particular this area to the west, that was looking like a more substantial main, more of a trunk that would serve other areas, but really, this is just a standard service main, that all the residents are picked up on it. So they felt, CDBG, when they read the application and saw the map, thought maybe it was more of a full-city improvement project, as opposed to a targeted neighborhood. And that was really the only feedback he could get from them as to why we weren't selected in this last round. Now, this doesn't mean we can't do the project, we're still working on designing it, but we have a few options. April one is the next round of applications for the grant, which we can reapply for, and he's been working on the application and helping him with that. If you would like us to reapply, which I would assume you would. So we've got a couple of options. One is to beef up his narrative and explain again that this is not a trunk main, it's really targeting just these specific neighborhoods, and to try and encourage CDBG to consider it more of targeted neighborhood improvement, as opposed to a full community. The other is for the CDBG application to drop this section to the west, because then it looks much clearer to be a specific neighborhood. Justin's recommendation, he could not be here tonight, was to do this, he thinks this is your best chance of getting the grant. It doesn't mean we can't design both and have it kind of broken into Phase Three and Three A, it's just that this section here to the west, to the west would not be grant-eligible. As far as dollars and cents go, if I drop off that section to the west, it was about thirty percent of the total length in main that we were looking to replace. As far as the cost difference, we're only looking at a saving of about twenty percent, because there's so much overhead that goes into a project. But so that's kind of where we're looking for your balance on it. So for direction tonight, first question is, yes, apply for the grant, April first. Do you feel tonight you have enough information to say if we should reapply with the full service area, or if we should limit to the smaller service area?
I think limit, um, in my talks with Justin, he wasn't confident we would get it if we keep in. And we don't wanna go through another three-month process of waiting to see if we're awarded, where if we can get awarded for the northeast side, that's the side we really need to get done.
Okay.
And I think from the people we've heard, that's the side that needs it the most.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, well, very good. So, and really, me and Kay has been working on the design of these improvements as well. So for this April one submission, we should have plans and specs ready to go with it too, which would give us a few more points. And then either way, we'll have this ready, so we can kind of move forward and take action, independent of how much you get on a grant.
So say all rainbows and everything, we get the grant of the five hundred thousand.
Yes.
But then we tie in the other project as a Phase Three A.
Right.
How much was that total together? I don't think I ever got that actual total.
And I can email you these as well. So the original project, total project cost, including contingencies that we weren't sure of, and ELA fees, we were at two-point-two million. Now, if I drop off the other section, our estimates will just shy of one-point-eight million.
So if we did just the northeast side, it'd be one-point-eight million. If we get the five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, the city would be on Hock for one-point-three, so that's where our loan would be.
Correct.
But if we try for the two-point-two, our loan's gonna be in the one-point-seven.
Range, yes.
April first, how soon do we hear whether we get the grant or not? Two months?
Yes, it was a little bit longer this time, I think, because they had the double session there. But I closed January, they were trying to get a whole package together for the award. So yeah, I'm hoping we would find out mid-May.
Now, if we find out mid-May, when would we bid, when would construction be able to start?
Well, so that's, I mean, we're gonna get the plans and specs into DNR as soon as we can, kind of independent of this process. Review has been a little slow in the water department, but Justin said, well, between me and Kay and him calling and encouraging people to complete the review, we think we could get that done. So we'd like to just keep pushing through on getting a construction permit while we wait to hear back on the grant. So goal is to be able to bid this summer, as soon as we know what your financing is.
Fall construction then is the plan?
If we can, yes.
Now, if for some reason there's a whole gob of competition at the April first one, which Justin is kind of warning us about too, the next one is June first or July first?
It's every three months, so May, June, July, starting everyone's on quarters.
So if it had to wait until July first, and we put in, then it would be next spring?
Well, if it was July first, we would, at that point, we should already have our construction permit. So we would be working on the DNR piece separately, and have all those ducks in a row, so then it would be, as soon as you found out, we could...
So we found out in September, we could...
Bid September.
Shovel and ground in the fall?
Yes.
That way too?
Yes.
That was one of my worries.
Yeah, I mean, it's always more difficult when you're waiting longer, because we're waiting to, you know, release the plans and specs to people, but we're gonna keep pushing forward regardless of hearing back about the grant, so that as soon as it's, as soon as we know, we're ready to go. Well, that's what I think we will...
When would you need to know if we wanna do the full scale or the house, the northeast side? Does that affect your work at all?
It doesn't affect the grant application, but, so I'm gonna have, I'm helping the engineers, there's two other engineers at our office who are doing the bulk of the legwork on this, I'm gonna have them focus on cleaning up the section we are doing, but they have looked at the whole system. So I would say by April one, we wanna know, because we'll be focusing on getting the plans bid ready to turn into DNR, and then after that, if we'd like to add the other section in, we could be doing that while we wait to hear about the grant.
Now, to ask a future question you might not be able to know yet. After we get, if we did the full thing?
Both sides, yes.
Yes. We're looking at just the south side then that needs to be done?
Yeah.
And theoretically, that is almost just one more project on its own?
My side is not complete yet.
There's still little ties, a few ties in the northwest side?
Or the, oh, here. Sorry, you can't see in that hall. Yeah, you're good. Um, you know what, what I can do, is I can have our CAD tech put together a map, that color codes just one color for everything that's been done, and then everything that has not been touched, different color. Because right now with the...
Which would help, because I'm looking at having, you know, how much can we borrow this year, knowing we're gonna be borrowing next year and the year after, I kind of need to kind of get some things in a row.
Yes, let me do that, I'll go back and I'll talk with Tony and have our CAD tech just make a two-color map, because right now they have...
Because we still have Phase Two of the lift station.
Correct.
To borrow from.
So yeah, so we'll get, you have plenty of projects in your future, I know, but we'll do that. We'll just have a two-tone map for you, and you can see everything you've targeted and what you have in your future.
That would be great.
Very good. Alright, well, I will talk with Justin and Ronnie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, did, I'm sorry. I could have that.
I'm walking away too soon.
When you do water main replacement projects, does it include the service line, or is it only the main and ports?
It's only, we do not do the service line up to the home, no.
They do just to the stop box.
To the stop box, so?
Correct.
And they get a new stop box.
Okay.
And if they have old pipes, then?
And it includes hydrants?
Yep. And we could, I mean, when you're televising that area, you usually get a good view of each of those services, so we can identify problems. Yeah, if there's any issues.
And you communicate that with the owners also, so they know what they have?
Over the two phases, we've only had one homeowner that's actually taken us up on it. Too, because it's a lower price to where if they had super old pipes and wanted them replaced at that time, that we pay for it, and they pay the city back.
Now, thanks for that.
Sure, thank you.
Alright, next up, we got Brian from Des Moines National Airport with a presentation on...
Amy, thanks for your time tonight. I'm Brian Mulcahy, from the Des Moines Airport Authority, I'm the Director of Finance. And bottom line up front, we're requesting approximately twenty-two thousand dollars over four years towards the new terminal in Des Moines. We're meeting with all the cities in Polk County, and then contiguous counties around Polk County as well. And the reason we're doing this is to try to put together some support, capital support for the new terminal, and then take to the state and request additional funds, and also to the FAA to request additional funds for the new terminal. See, you got the slides, I'm gonna go through, I'll go through these pretty quickly. But feel free to stop me if you have any questions. The Des Moines Airport Authority has run the airport for the last ten years, previously it was the City of Des Moines Department, but we are now independent from the City of Des Moines, and we're not supported by property taxes. Next slide, out of all of our passengers, from a 2018 study, approximately forty-two percent are people coming into the metro central Iowa area. So a lot of people just think of the airport as local people flying out, coming back. We actually have, almost half our traffic is people coming into the region for this business, to visit family, whatever. A lot of use amongst the cities outside of Des Moines. This top zip's using DSM slide, actually Mitchellville's, we just got the first page on here, but Mitchellville's on the second page. You're on the second page, number fifty-one. You had approximately twenty-one hundred tickets in 2018. You had approximately twenty one hundred tickets in two thousand eighteen. So as a per capita rate for your population, it's one of the higher ones, you're close to one to one. So your residents or businesses are using the airport as well. Some of the bigger cities are more like seventy five percent or eighty percent ratio. Our current status slide here, you know, the airport has grown our roadmap pretty significantly over the last five, six years, grew up to twenty nine destinations. And we're quickly returning to a constrained environment that we were in prior to the pandemic. We had no parking places for airplanes around the terminal anymore, they're full. And we're getting to the point where our limited, our potential to attract new airlines or new routes is getting severely constrained because of that. If you've been to the airport recently here, you've kind of seen the new entrance. So that's open about three months ago. We'll be working on the purple section this summer on the roadway. The orange box is an expanded parking garage. We will start construction on that in twenty three, assuming we have the money to do that. And obviously, the green box is the new terminal. Plan for that is twenty four to twenty six for construction, doing design ahead of that. Next few slides are just some renderings. The first one here is the artwork that was donated by the Greater Des Moines Art Foundation. It's installed as of December and it's pretty good. Then we got the road coming back to the north at the Interoff floor. And then next one shows the peel off to the right. That'll be the loop to get back into the parking garage, go straight to the terminal. And then this is a view from floor of the loop coming back to the parking garage and the new parking garage expansion there in the distance. And then this slide is just the renderings of the terminal. We haven't done any design on the terminal yet, but you know, the idea is to have a lot of glass so that it's natural light and bigger hold rooms, more room for people to sit down. Our hold rooms right now were designed for smaller aircraft back in the seventies and eighties. You know, maybe fifty to sixty passengers. We now have aircraft that are holding one hundred and fifty to one hundred and eighty passengers. Not enough room in the hold rooms. People want to sit on the floor, stay in the hallways, it gets very crowded all the time. So make it, just modernize the airport to deal with the growth that we're seeing. This terminal financing slide, on the left, we have the costs. So we're anticipating that we're going to be around five hundred seventy five million to finish the terminal. On the right hand side, the funding sources, we've got some private investment on the airport for some of the enabling projects, that's to enable us to build the terminal where we need to, moving some buildings around, moving tenants around to open up the space. The authority will spend two hundred, approximately two hundred twenty five million over the course of this project. We're asking the regional municipalities and counties for a thirty four million dollar contribution. And then we're hoping to leverage that into the state and federal contributions of three hundred million. The next slide, we have the dollar amounts that we're asking from each city. So we've been out this for a little while now. We've got, most of the cities, you know, immediately around the metro have signed a resolution of some sort or letter of agreement. The only ones writing on it still are Johnston and Grimes, all the way down to Mitchellville. And then we're working, we're speaking now with Mitchellville, Oakheart, Collins and Pullman. Polk County has approved the ten million dollar resolution. And then we're getting Warren County, a couple of cities and county are reviewing it now. So that's our progress to date. Project timeline, I've kind of spoken through already, but our goal is to get the terminal done and open by the end of twenty six. If we get funding, because some of the money that we're getting from counties is our money that has to be spent by twenty twenty six. American Plan Recovery Act money. Finally, the slide is, you know, just our request, as I mentioned up front, we're asking for capital contribution. It's a one time contribution, we're not asking for ongoing support of the airport. The reason we're asking municipalities and counties around the airport is just because we don't have property tax support. But it's all of us that are using the airport and we want to try to get this done to provide the, you know, vibrant airport, keep growing and keep supporting the local economy. So appreciate your time tonight and certainly answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions for Brian? Where do you get the majority of your funding from?
Well, the airport authority itself, our revenues are about probably forty million dollars a year. One third from the airlines, a third from parking, and then the other third from concessions and other rents on the airport. We typically put about eight to ten million dollars a year to reserves. So that's why you can see this, it would take us another twenty years to get to the point where we can build this ourselves. We did get funding from the Iowa State DOT, aviation fuel taxes go to the DOT for an aviation maintenance fund, approximately anywhere from three to six hundred thousand dollars a year for maintenance on the airfield. And then we get money from the FAA also. Typically, we get about four million dollars a year for airfield maintenance, that's runways, taxiways. That's the airport improvement program. And the last piece is passenger facility charges. That's a four dollars and fifty cent tag or charge on every ticket. That comes back to the airport for projects like this. So that's pretty much our funding in a nutshell.
Is that going to the per ticket?
There's a proposal, there's been a proposal in Congress for years to try to raise the PSC because that passenger facility charge is passed in two thousand dollars at a four dollar and fifty cent cap.
With that standard across the nation?
Pretty much. Some airports can only charge three fifty, larger airports can only charge three fifty. Some, there's probably three or four airports at any given time across the country that don't have projects, so they don't charge the fee at that time. But most airports have a PSC on their tickets all the time. Just because that's the most efficient funding route. It doesn't go to Washington and come back, it comes directly to the airport. And we, as long as our projects are approved by FAA, we can use it.
Anybody else got anything from Brian right now?
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Next item we got tonight is a Consider For Approval Resolution approving the city financial audit for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. That was that audit we got on our desk.
Last meeting.
Last meeting. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Looks like it went well.
Roll call?
Waller?
Yes.
Willamette?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Cowan?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Next is setting the public hearing date for the FY twenty three budget approval as March seventh, twenty twenty two. That's a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? Roll call?
Hoover?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Cowan?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Willamette?
Yes.
Derek? Looks like you still reading something.
Paul? Two hundred and fifty. Two hundred and twenty five calls for January, twenty five warnings, eight citations, eighty five building checks. Nothing else wild or crazy there. Business is normal. Paul?
About the one thing I got is from Saturday, or the Monday, we used about five hundred and eight thousand gallons of water. And that's probably about anywhere from two twenty to two forty thousand gallons, more than one. That's with the fire and the water main break.
Yes.
That's it.
I got told the water main break wasn't our fault.
Not pointing fingers. What do you got, Mike? First things first, I'd like to thank everybody for approving Josh. He's going to be a great addition to our team. They have three members going to firefighter one class starting March first, so I'm pretty excited about that as well. So that's something that's required by us. So Josh will be one of those that's going with that. And in case nobody heard, we did have a fire. Everybody did a great job. It was a rather large fire, we got tripped out to a fully involved commercial structure. They tended cleverly and they were all, everybody did a great job. I do claim maybe two hundred thousand gallons of that water and some salt, some sand. We kept these guys up all day, so it was good that Public Works and PD and all of us worked together very well that day, so. In case you're interested, we had an eight minute response time. And after that, within three to four minutes, there was water on the fire. That's pretty fantastic. I'm very happy with that. We did have one injury on scene. I believe that injury could have been. We didn't have to have that injury, but there was some things that happened to, to cause that injury. If anybody wants to know anything, I can talk about that later, but. Other than that, we've been in contact with Sharon, we've shared with Sharon Stradens. Been a lot of, a lot of public support for her, so it's good to see that too. Our community's come together well for her, so I'm happy to see that we got a, we got a great community and they're doing good things for people in need, so that's good. That being said, we're up to twenty seven calls so far this year.
All right, thank you. Matt?
My turn. I always follow somber things with all my fun stuff. So, right now, calendars have been posted on our website, thanks to Ronnie. She put all the crazy information I threw in front of her together and made it all organized and neat so other people could read it. So that's on our website. We shared a post on Cities Facebook and Parks and Rec Facebook. So there's a link out there to get to that. I also posted a list of our summer events that are coming up. That's also on our Facebook. But just a couple of the bigger items that are coming up this summer. Party in the Park this year, with your guys' approving the carnival and all that. It's going to be two days this year, it'll be June third and fourth. We're going to have. I wrote it all down, so I'd remember what to say. Party in the Park on that Friday, we're going to have a really awesome pet show. So if you've got critters, bring them up. So that'll be going on, or I have the times, it'll come out later. But we'll have a pet show, we'll have our bags tournaments, we'll have an adult beverage garden with live music or DJ, depends on when I get figured out for that Friday night, plus the carnival. Then on Saturday, we're going to host a kind of a Mitchellville's Got Talent. So if you can sing, dance, jump, juggle, fire and chainsaws, whatever you got, we'd like to showcase that.
Put your own insurance card if you're juggling fire.
Yeah, bring your own insurance. But we're going to do some talent stuff down there. We will also have for that night, Mike or Mark Moody and the Outlaws. So Mark is a police officer from Des Moines. I hear really good things about his music and so we're excited to bring them in. So that's Party in the Park. We're also going to be doing a Fourth of July celebration this year, but not on the Fourth of July. It's on Saturday, July second. So we'll have more information obviously coming out about that. But this is kind of your backyard community barbecue type of deal. So we're looking at getting donations for some food so we can offer free barbecue meal, like hamburgers, hot dogs, that kind of thing. Bounce houses, the fire department's going to do, you know, dark tank and that sort of thing, bar games. I have booked the Schmidt Brothers again to come and do for that. And I am working with JM Displays. I've got some pretty neat proposals for fireworks display. So these folks are licensed, bonded, insured, they bring in a ten million dollar liability policy. So we're working out all the logistics for that. But pretty excited for, you know, some of the new stuff that we're going to bring in this year. So on another note, besides all that stuff, look at the Facebook if you want that full list. I want to thank Will, Willamette, and Danny Gold for helping me keep that ice rink going. That's a lot of work goes into that thing and these guys have been down there fixing holes after I, after you reflood it, you get little air pockets that turn into little potholes. And so these guys go down and fill them back in and, you know, you pack it with snow and put some water on top and it smoothes out. So, thank you. Pass that on to Danny for me too. Recently, I've been working, you may have seen some of the Facebook posts for some of the stuff that Pleasant Hill Parks and Rec is putting out. So I've been working with them, they're sharing some of our events to their community and I'm going to start sharing more of their events and ours. Try to work together on dates and times and, you know, offering more things to both communities. So that's a really neat deal. And as far as the fire goes, thank you Public Works, absolutely. Public Works and PD, you know, those guys were instrumental in making sure that we had enough water and we didn't break our necks on the ice rink, the other ice rink. So, thank you again. And that's all I got?
Thank you. Ronnie?
I've been making all the calendars and stuff for my last three years, so.
Bill?
I don't have any more.
Will?
I just want to say good job that everybody was on the fire. Public Works, you guys did a great job, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Also, trivia night was awesome. That was a really big one, so I think the next one's this Friday, right?
Yeah. Can I talk some more again? So, thanks for mentioning trivia night. This coming Friday night, we will have trivia again, seven o'clock at the community center. All our proceeds from this one, we're going to donate to Sharon. So come out, have a good time, bring your snacks. We had a table last week that had a whole spread, maybe like lasagna's and, you know, meat and cheese trays. So, you know, plenty of room for the kids to run around with the other end of the community center. We don't have an age limit on who can play the trivia, so, you know. Thank you.
Anything else, Will? Oh, I was going to say the ice rink has been doing really good. So if you guys are looking for anything for cheap ice skates, playing sports, that's some really good ones, so check it out. I know I got mine there for like thirty four dollars, so. Yeah, so.
I don't know how to move on those things, there's something.
Brad?
Real quick, the January library board meeting was canceled due to some sickness with some people. Gloria Verme is stepped down as a board member, and so it looks like there's going to be an opening on the board. And to kind of echo what Will said, excellent job by everybody involved as well as our community. The community has stepped up big time. I know that the whole shebang's had a benefit dinner, Tower Thirty Six, the Legion, and the way that the community has stepped up to help out one of our own is truly impressive.
Andrew?
I did attend Parks and Rec meeting and we basically went over Matt's agenda for the summer and everything and got that on the place. And I'd like to also thank the fire department for keeping the fire off my house, my garage, seven feet away. Very thankful. Very thankful of our northern winds, really helped, I think, that a lot too, but it was, it was pretty scary. Very emotional, but thank you. Oh, and also the community center is having a spaghetti dinner on next Friday, on the 3rd Friday of the month, like all. We will be sharing our proceeds with Sharon, and we're having bingo following also, so it should be a fun night, so. Next Friday night, as in, not this?
The 18th.
The 15th? What? 18th, sorry. The 18th, yeah. Thank you.
I didn't wanna, we are taking close for Sharon, but the Vine has had the Rona hit some of their hamburgers. So they did ask us to reach out to everybody and ask them, if you wanna donate sanitizing wipes or hand sanitizer, something, come bring those up here for candy too.
James?
Yes, it's been three weeks, so I do have a list, I apologize. The Mid Iowa Planning Alliance for Community Development, I remember we joined that about three weeks ago. They were excited to share that they got their Economic Development Administration designation. So they're eligible for that $70,000 grant for their operating expenses every year, so they were excited to share that with us. So they are definitely gonna be a group that's gonna be proceeding. I don't know if you guys get the legislative updates or even paid attention to any of them, but the big one that the cities are talking about and worried about is their changes to lost as a part of the tax overall. The state, if they approve it, and it looks like they might, they're gonna shift lost to a state sales tax instead. With the promise that that penny that they divert will come back to the cities. But we know backfill, we came back to the city for another 10 years. So cities are worried then they're gonna lose that penny for lost. Especially cities that have lost projects, that they're using that lost money to pay back, they're dead. So fortunately, we're not in that situation, but that is something we need to keep our eye on. Linga Cities is kind of working to understand all the impacts before they start lobbying one way or the other. The way I hear it, it's going to pass through the senate pretty soon, and then it'll go to the house. So that is something you might wanna, you know, if you have an in with any of our reps, might wanna put a call out. I met with Bill Puffett for our annual insurance renewal, met, went to the park and rec. Had an interesting meeting with a developer with RE/MAX regarding a potential development in town of a daycare he's looking at. Library board meeting is tomorrow night. I have a webinar on the new grant proposals coming out that Iowa DOT is taking part in to see if we can get anything from them on February 10th. And I went to, was invited to State Centers Council meeting last Thursday, 'cause they had invited a group in that does free broadband internet for towns. They do them a lot in arenas, where you know, like if you go to, like, they're actually doing the Super Bowl. You go to the Super Bowl and you get on the wifi and you don't have to pay for it. They're offering it to towns, it's a support program, which is done now with education. And if that's something we're interested in looking at, I would be willing to have them come to one of our meetings. It involves things I don't quite get, but you know, when you log into a website, there's data that's shared and they can make profits off of that. If they log into our website, and that's how we could pay for it. And I can, they can explain that all much more in detail, so if you want me to set something up, I sure can bring them in. I attended a web, a Zoom meeting with the Iowa Public Information Board. We had gotten a complaint filed, I guess the library board, that they had violated open meetings. And it was dismissed, they found that there was no substance to the charges. So for the next agenda, are we wanting to put on a resolution regarding the airports?
I think we should put it on there at least.
That would be on?
For our budgets for a minute.
Yeah.
You gotta talk about.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you want, 'cause they gave me a resolution, so. They're ready for you to pass. And that, I think, is all I have right now.
Alright. Library board meeting's tomorrow. On the 9th, I have the mayor's roundtable in Ankeny with MIALG. And then the 10th, I have mayor's training part two with Iowa Mayors Association. And a bunch of other meetings to go through in the next couple of weeks, but the last two have been pretty quiet. My biggest thing is just, congrats to both the fire department, or all, all three. For, you guys got that fire out and the containment was outstanding. How fast they got the water on the surrounding buildings to keep it from spreading to those other two, how close they were, and how hot that fire was, that, that's awesome. Good job. Public Works for being out there and then having to come back out to the water main break just a couple hours later. I know everybody had a long day. So PD, Public Works, Fire Department, thank you guys so much. I think it was outstanding. And then to follow that up, the community showed that they can do just as well coming together. And they had all these events and got a lot of this money raised, and it really... Now, just, it was beautiful, honestly. And that's all I had for my updates. The next thing we're gonna do is move into a work session for the budget.
No, on the comments.
Oh, sorry. Anybody in the public that'd like to trust the council? Alrighty. The next thing we're gonna do is our work session. Anybody who wants to leave before the budget portion, or so everybody can get settled in, it's taking about five minutes.
Yeah? I did too. Is that one point, did he share? Oh, no, that's what I did.
I seriously opened the box, I looked at that, I was like.
Thanks, I know my request is gonna make a lot more work for you, hopefully on the backside.
I have the beautiful package.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, 'cause I appreciate, 'cause I think it'll help everybody collectively.
No problem.
I was like, oh, it's Ryan. You tell him I said that? Like, I would fall asleep, I'd be like, sorry, I fell asleep now. I was so vulnerable when I was like, he's like Derek.
But it had a baby zone and it hit wrong way. No, they were looking at Westland, it's, it's, it's very odd. No, I know, yeah, they probably, yeah, that was not great though, but originally, they came in here about, I don't know, six, six months ago. It's been a while, but I also wonder if, if they wanted, if they originally were looking at Westland right across on Saturday, you mean a comment, but. We have to resolve the, I think they do give you that. We have an issue with the other two, where we zone is still can't use, so I think it scared them off, they didn't want to make. Where they couldn't, or during, or something, they had to go with. Yes. I confused everyone when I do same color, so the gray ones are just the ones. One year, I think I had like three different, different faces. And so I did get three different, I had another color, I had coral, and I just come out, if I had to do it again, but we haven't had to. So you don't have one David one? It doesn't have holes, but it's. No, that's okay, that's okay.
Which one said we jumped over, you didn't jump over something, or did we go back?
No, we jumped over something the first night. We got, the general plan's completely done, but I think we can certainly make some changes to it, so that we could fit in some other stuff. So we're gonna take a review, we'll take a brief review of the general plan, just to make sure.
He turns back foot. A dollar, a dollar per foot now, maybe less than a dollar. Anyway, it's not too far outside, we hear a bugger, and Red and I had to run, we got our hole for, so we got our rock down to some.
Were you all smiling? I'm just glad you smiled. I was like, some of these meetings afterwards.
So, I had two different dates for the first meeting.
It's the 4th, or, or, I'm gonna say it's 6th, right?
H-Primer, right, it says, yeah, it used to be the 3rd.
I updated it on the city website.
Yeah, I saw it was updated, okay, okay, which one do I have?
Nobody can say they don't know nothing, because I spent literally three days last week only putting stuff on my calendar, so. If they don't know that, they don't know.
You go to one meeting and you lose them all, yeah.
Thank you for sending these out at a good time.
You're welcome. As I learned.
And with page numbers.
And page numbers, and it's the same page numbers.
And the same columns. So you can take one out and compare it to the other one.
I try. I generally go out now, where it should be.
I should try, I don't think I need to keep all the budget.
I will give you a final, when we actually finalize.
I'm just saying, all of these, I have some previous years, I got previous council members, since I'm my first one. I have a whole lot of like, over.
The Chamber of Commerce?
The tree board.
Oh, I think so, the chamber, I would like to.
The tree board, he used to change the third place dates. But then it kind of always gets judged about, they tend to like place dates.
They don't have anything said, they just remember their chair call.
Bruce Sweeten is the chair, chairs.
Yeah, and then we'll tell you.
Chair's, chair's at the meeting, so. Are we going over the three pages? Well, we'll have to skim through the first. We got, we're the general plan, so we live on.
Reminder of that, reminder of that.
Yeah, we're ready to start, 'cause I asked you all, why don't you keep going, and you're like, no. Rose, page 22, we need to start, uh, what we need to do, no?
I got lots of questions.
Cause I looked at.
I had better prices than him. He was in your office for like two hours.
Yeah, but then it turned into that internet discussion, it's essentially.
Yeah, the only thing he sent out those, that, there's like a collective grant meeting, but our prices that we got, or whatever it is.
Oh, I offered to share, you know what?
And I was like, yeah.
I like the internet.
Oh, I think that's, I think it's a risk here. Because you told me it was gonna cost.
Because, you said it was, it was custom, but I looked up.
Let's tell you, it's back on track.
So I sent out, you get the new packet, and I sent out explanations of the changes that I made. Were there any questions in the deductions that I made on that sheet? Cause I don't have my sheet on that either, I know Derrick was okay with the change I made to him.
Library was because of our.
Library was in there hours, most of the, yeah, there wasn't a lot. So what those changes went to in was, I set up a...
The city improvement fund, you were gonna put some.
Some of the pages don't have any changes, yes? Oh, he does. Okay, so yeah, a decrease in the police department slightly, then the library, and the fire department. Increased revenues, levy increase for insurance. And generally, valuations were a little higher, so we got another $14,000 boost there. So I put in $24,000 into the animal control line item, because we have the contract that I didn't count for. Sanitation went up a little, nuisances went up a little, mayor council went up a little for conferences and travel. The clerk went up a little, 'cause I'm moving more my salary from water and sewer, because as you see in the audit, our water reserves and our sewer reserves were a little lower than what they liked. And then $1,200 into the city hall fund for microphones. I put $20,000 into the city improvement fund, which is a permanent fund that I'd set up to start with the street improvement, the... Beautification of Center Street, that they had, so they had money in there. That, this twenty thousand dollars then would go towards future purchase of storm sirens. So if we put twenty thousand dollars aside this year, maybe in fiscal twenty-four, we put another thirty thousand in, and we'd have fifty thousand in the storm sirens. Is an idea, is one of the ideas. So those are the changes I made to the general fund. Does anybody want more or less changes? Do you wanna go through them a little quicker, or a little slower than what I just kinda rattled off there?
Can we add fifty-eight hundred dollars for the airport?
Yes, I will have to find that somewhere too, yes.
Their fault. The volunteer for the. Salary would come on.
I heard him say it.
I thought it was shaking his head.
So what's the deduction, uh, community beautification compared to improvement?
The city improvement is, is a permanent fund. Any money you put in there, you can use it year to year. Now then, the general fund is that community beautification line, and that is just, if you don't use it, it's gone, I mean, that's. The general fund money doesn't stay as a permanent fund for things to be used for that purpose. That's why that, and what is, is there two thousand?
One's a savings account, one's a checking account.
Kinda, yeah.
Checking and checking, right over here, the savings and.
Which line item, what page are you on for the community?
Uh, twenty, for beautification.
Has that been used since?
Page twenty. Oh, that is, um, that's nuisance property cleanups. The community beautification, on page twenty, the ten thousand dollars, that's just nuisance property cleanups.
I was looking at page twenty for the five hundred dollars, saving beautification, but that's for doing stuff like the.
That was for the flower, flower pots that we put out front, that, that we paid the, um, little four inch kids to do. Sorry. The big four inch kids, I don't know how you want to say it, the, the wonderful four inch kids that did that and proved their looks of our city so well.
What is the main street beautification?
The main street beautification is a separate fund, it's not in the general fund. It is on page one, and we haven't got to these funds yet, that would be coming up next. It is on page twenty-nine, city improvement fund revenues and expenses. So you can see I have a twenty thousand dollar transfer into there, that is, uh, I'm gonna put that in there for the future storm sirens. And I'm expecting that we'll spend a hundred thousand out of that, maybe for Center Avenue projects, whether it's lights, trees, whatever we decide to do down there. Cause there's money in that fund for us to spend for that purpose.
So when you talk about sirens, are you also talking about the streetlights and where the trees used to be?
It's all.
Two separate things?
It's two separate line items that will be in that city improvement fund. It's kinda like, like the rec fund is a separate fund, but we have more than one project going on in that.
Nedra, is that helping you? I know we tried to talk about, I know I didn't know the answer.
And I could name, or I could rename that city improvement fund, but I kinda, that's kinda the fund, and that fund was started from the house we sold. If y'all remember, we, we fixed up that, or we bought that, we got that nuisance property house and we sold it, we got about sixty thousand dollars. So that's what started that fund. So that was kind of what we could use to keep improving Mitchellville, so that's kinda why I named it the city improvement fund. Um, city hall had some unspent money in that fund, or unspent money, so we transferred that money in here last year. And that's what we're using to pay for our doors, so it's not coming out of current money.
So it's one fund that can be used for multiple things?
Right, the, yes. And any of these funds are under your direction, so if you want money transferred from the city improvement fund into. A fund you create for something else, or into the water fund, or back into the general fund, there's nothing limiting it. No, not to that fund, I mean, there are some funds that are limited, you can't transfer employee benefit funds, or you can't transfer road use funds, but this, this account you can transfer.
As a street in front of the cemetery getting done this year.
Yeah, we're getting to it, that was my biggest question.
We, hopefully, the, the problem is, is just the block. So what I hoped for was that we would be able to do a big project and have a couple of streets that we do at one time. Because otherwise, you're paying for all the mobilization for one block. I was hoping to do it in conjunction with, um.
Watering?
The one, yeah, yeah, you know, some of those other projects, cause that's how we did all those other streets.
And I think we should still do that, but also think.
Mine is on my top list.
A couple of years ago, I talked about. We were getting started on parks, and that was a good idea, but a couple of years ago, I talked about, so. We need to be able to go from parks also into cemeteries, because when we do that street, we do the water. You gotta do the ditches and the sidewalks, and guess what, then you're doing the entryways and. We got a pretty good cemetery compared to a lot of people.
Yeah, I just, I can't bring them in to do one block, it, it just costs too much.
Okay.
But when we do.
But do we have money to work on sidewalks?
When you say work on sidewalks, do you want us to replace private sidewalks?
You mean on.
In front of the.
No, in front of the cemetery.
Oh, in front of the cemetery, okay, um.
In front of the cemetery, and also maybe improve the cemetery.
If you want to add more money into the cemetery budget, we sure can, that's the general fund, so.
I'm not saying for next year, I'm saying, cause I've talked about this two years ago, it's like, then now we have trees cut down on center, and so we gotta get to those too, and. Matt's almost just the fall money he needed for parks.
So yeah, if you, if we want to do some more cutting in the general fund, so we can increase the cemetery budget, we should can.
I would like to propose that we only do half of the stage this year. I think forty-two thousand dollars for the stage, when we have some of the other things going on that we really need help with, there's a lot of money. And I had a couple of residents ask me about that, and so.
Well, my understanding is the stage would be all cement, so that'd be the big part, so if we don't have.
I mean, only pay for half of it, or set aside half of it for this year, and put it off for a year. Because I think that's a very large amount of money going into one situation, that we have. Other things that we really need to keep stepping along with too, so, that's just my opinion.
I, I think the stage would be actually pretty helpful for the town, it's gonna generate revenue for us. Different people in town do. It's a big project, and I think it's gonna be really beneficial for us, so.
I got ten dollars in the donation box worth it.
I had looked at mobile stages running on, you know, from different times and things, and I don't think. We would spend that much if we ran a stage for a couple of years, or for, you know, for a while, but that's just my opinion.
So we're looking at parks on page nineteen, the sixty-five thousand?
Yeah. Should we just move that back to the beautification account? That's just my opinion, so.
I had that, that stage, Leachers and Killinger in our.
No, you're right.
I am right.
Yes, forty, forty-two thousand is for the stage, about eight thousand for Killinger, five thousand was there in general. Make, general routine yearly expenses for the park.
Sooner or later, you're gonna have to address the sidewalk in Killinger too. There's a pretty big section that's just crap.
Well, that's kinda part of the tree project, I would imagine.
We could, yeah.
And that's part of the hundred thousand she's talking about. You're gonna get there pretty quick, but yeah, you're right.
The sidewalk and the park are along the street, Paul.
The street, right out here. Hangled up to City Hall.
I actually saw somebody.
In front of the cemeteries.
I actually saw somebody fall down, out there getting out of it.
Keep in mind, we've got leaks, we don't know how long that can leak in, and it can notice that parking. It's all cracked through there, so that could've been all undermined, so that might have to be addressed at some point.
We're only talking about good news tonight?
I got here in the wrong place.
So where do we start? So where do you wanna go with the general fund? Cause the streets, the sidewalks, that's funds we haven't to yet. Are we content with how it is, or do we wanna make any changes?
I'm not sure, most of your concerns, but if nobody else has, I might think we'll.
Yeah, so if anyone else is okay with them, then I will let them know.
All right, then we're at page twenty-two, the start of all the non-general fund funds, road use fund. Uh, we expect to get three hundred sixty thousand in, if you can see, the, uh, salaries have gone up in that line item, because I'm putting, um, more of our public works laborers in that. As opposed to the operators, those are coming out of plants, so that's gonna help the water and sewer plants not spend as much money. Um, we have, for a street project in that fund, we have a hundred thousand dollars. So we would be able to do a few streets in town, hopefully in correlation with another water project that we're bringing in, a street crewing. Is that gonna save us money?
New maps we got tonight with the area we're looking at doing, does that include that, the area?
No, what, what happens is when they come in, when they tear up the street, that's part of that project. But while that crew is in town, and usually they use one of the main ones, we can hire that crew to do another street for us. Yes, that's generally how we get it done cheaply, or we go through Pope County, and when Pope County has a crew close by, we can get in on their rates.
Cause that area that Brent was talking about is pretty bad, especially when there's.
Yes, Mike, Mike has the next one up to, to do.
Now, Paul, when you mentioned about where the break is this weekend or whatever, are we concerned about the street underneath there? Possibly. See, it's cracked all the way down through there now.
That's pretty important, if it looks. So when they do the water project, it's going up center, are they gonna tear up the road? Cause it seems like we just put that road in not that long ago, and they put a new pipe.
There's ten inch main going down center already, so they're not.
I don't think they have to do that.
No, are they?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm just talking about.
Cause it, it looked like it was on her map.
Oh, no, no, no.
It wasn't?
No, she was holding it.
Yeah.
I almost had to correct that, but.
She was on a roll, so.
Okay. Yeah, no, you're right, I didn't wanna tear up that road again.
No, and I haven't seen any of the schematics yet on the project for that.
I'll be looking for the color code.
Um, otherwise, roads is pretty tied by what our revenue is, we pretty much, we try to spend what we had now. Roads, um, two years ago was at a zero balance, because we did first and had some for cotton that we had to put in there. Um, and last year, we didn't spend much at all this current year and last year, so we're building it up, so we'll build it, we could actually theoretically spend more than a hundred thousand. Because roads is again a, a permanent fund, like the seaford funds, the money stays in there and builds up. So, we can plan something for a project anyways in roads. Any questions on roads?
Am I having a problem with our space street sign this year?
Um, I don't know.
Recently.
What's that?
Space.
People stealing space.
Oh, you think they're stealing it?
Do we have any problems recently?
I actually was still up the other day. Those things are like secure down there, are like pretty.
Best we can do.
I mean, I was just looking on the. But someone asked me the same thing.
I saw the eight hundred dollars for signs, and then I think of space and high.
Um, the next two pages, twenty-three and four, is the, um, employee benefits, it's a separate fund, cause we do every board, and we do a transfer in. And that's pretty much a SEP fund, we, we put in there exactly what we need to cover our employee benefits. You'll, you may ask why, why it goes up a little bit, um, because we're putting more of our, my salary out of the water and sewer fund into the general fund. So then it comes out of this fund, as opposed to water and sewer employee benefits come out of the water and sewer fund. That's why it's, our health insurance went down, so you would hope that our employee benefit would go down, but it, it didn't, because there's no salary going in there. Out of water and sewer. Unless I'm confusing you, I'm confusing myself. Um, if there are any questions on that, those two, page twenty-five is just kind of the start of some little funds that sometimes are used and sometimes aren't. Uh, fund one seventeen is the ARPA revenues. We should, we expect to get a hundred seventy-five thousand this coming July or August, and I expect we'll pay that, or expend it in this fiscal twenty-three. Um, and we can discuss down the road what we're gonna spend it on, but I assume we would spend it, we'd have to spend it by, like you said, fiscal twenty-six, it's the same money. Um, last time, last year, we spent it on the new filtration filters at the water plant, remember those came in at a hundred and seventy? There's one more that needs replaced, right, Paul?
Right.
Do you know, do you think we'll need to do that this coming year?
I think we can wait another year.
So if that can wait, we could use the hundred seventy-five and put it towards the sixth street part of the water main project that we're gonna have to do, as a possibility? But I expect we'll spend it as, when we get it. Um, the next two funds, the FEMA, emergency funds, those are, have zero coming in, zero going out. Lost capital projects revenue, we expect to get two hundred and twenty-five thousand, I expect to actually pay out five hundred and twenty-five thousand, cause we'll be paying out on a, a. Project, I remember why we can transfer that out there. It's been a couple of months since I looked at this, sorry. Um, probably it's going into the lift station phase two, or a water project. Water project, phase three. A transfer into five hundred thousand, so that would be, actually be phase four, but it didn't. So that's with that five hundred thousand coming out of the lost capital projects, lost property tax relief, we expect to get two hundred and twenty-five thousand. We'll spend two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's how we kept our levy down at the nine point eight with the increased expenses. The next page is, um, funds we don't use, since we no longer do TIP, we no longer have TIP revenue, TIP expenses, L I expenses, L I's revenues. All of those are zero for that, this coming year. Page twenty-seven is all of the funds for the police and the fire, equipment replacement funds, and fire truck replacement funds. Those are, those are at zero, except for the equipment fund, remember we're transferring seven thousand out of Mike's fund into that fund for future air tanks. Okay? If I'm going too fast, let me know. And again, page twenty is Derek's police revenue, car replacement, equipment funds, there's nothing in there right now, cause we don't anticipate. But he'll probably transfer some funds at the end of the year that he didn't spend, but we don't budget for those. Page twenty-nine, the top, city improvement fund, that twenty thousand coming in, is what I expect to transfer out of the general fund, to cover a startup of a storm siren fund. And again, I expect to spend all a hundred thousand that I have set aside for Center Avenue beautification. Debt service fund, it, it's self-explanatory, this is how much we have to transfer in, and transfer and then pay out for the debt that's not revenue debt, this is general obligation debt. So it's paid for property taxes. All right, uh, water replacement is on there, just because we had history. Page thirty is the capital projects that we're done with, but there's still history there, there's page thirty-one, same thing. Uh, then we get to water. Water revenues and water expenses are pretty much tied, I'm trying to leave a healthy balance, I'm predicting we'll get eight hundred thousand about in revenue in water. We'll spend about seven hundred and seventy, trying to get a little more cushion there than we've had in the past. Pretty much standard, as you see the, um, payroll has gone down, because again, I transferred some salaries out of that into roads and into the general fund. To kinda help out the water fund, so we maybe don't have to raise rates as much as we might have to. Any questions on this, and again, this is just estimating, we never know when a well's gonna go out. And again, this is just estimating, we never know when a well's gonna go out, when a generator's gonna go out, it's just how it is. You've got fifty-eight thousand there, that's our contract for the water tower with Suez. They'll come and do whatever the maintenance is required for that year, they gave us a schedule when we signed that contract.
How much was that?
Uh, fifty-eight thousand. And that's at the bottom of page thirty-three. And then our transfer out of the water fund, that is for the revenue debt that we have on the water. Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, so that's transferred out into the water safety fund, which is where we pay water revenue debt out of. Did I go through water way too fast? Okay.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, isn't it? That's what I heard.
Um, the next two funds, the utility deposits, we're gonna take in deposits, and then we pay out deposits when people move. Generally, we're gonna take in more than we spend out, because people, we're gonna be building a bunch of new houses, so we're gonna be taking in more than we spend out. And some of the olders don't have deposits on their accounts, since we didn't start making deposit, or have required deposits till, I think, two thousand and six or something like that. So if you owned a house before then, you don't have a deposit, you go pay your final bill. Um, water, capital project phase three, that's where the million five is, I haven't created a, a other term for... So that's worth saying, uh, so that's the million five, is kind of what I anticipate we'll spend for the water project. If we don't have to, we don't have to, that'd be great. Because we are gonna have to raise water rates to do...
Do we have, do we have this managed yet?
No, we'll have to take out a loan, yeah, we'll have to take out a loan, and it would be a revenue loan, so we would be required statutorily to raise our water rates to cover that debt.
Okay.
Unless we can miraculously get money from somewhere, or not end up having to do this bigger project, or... It's kind of why I was asking for a timeline, because I think if we do another phase three, I've gotta recommend that we wait maybe two years before we do phase four, because we're gonna need to get some debt lowered a little bit before we keep continuing to raise sewer rates and water rates every year. And we have phase two of a sewer lift station project out there, we've got that phase two coming up now, yeah, it's gonna be under a million, but that's still gonna be increased sewer rates.
I, I think the waters are greatly improved, after we hit this next phase down, I, I think we'll be...
I think the filter actually helped a lot.
Well, filter was probably...
We don't have it in every attempt anymore, so nobody's...
Okay, so then the last page is the sinking revenue, again, that came from the, uh, water fund, and it's going into the, um, being paid with the debt. And then we're on the sewer. Sewer is about the same as water, um, payroll went down, because again, I, I've rearranged payroll a bit, but I anticipate we'll get about six hundred thousand. And I'm hoping we'll spend about four hundred and eighty-five thousand, because as the owner said, that's the fund that needs to be built up the most, so I'm hoping sewer can get built up. Um, I do not have phase two of the lift station in this budget, just because I, I haven't heard anything on how much it's gonna be, and then how soon they're gonna be ready to do it. That might be something that we can kind of do it. Sewer sinking is the same thing as water sinking, that fund comes from, or money comes from the sewer, goes into the sinking fund each month, and then I have that money built up to pay the debt. And then the very last page is the fiduciary funds, um, the library's no more, but, uh, there's a park memorial fund now, uh, so they can sell benches, they can sell bricks, and that money stays there. Um, Thomas Mitchell Historical Society has a fiduciary fund with us, so they just give us their bank statements, um, but we don't budget anything in those two items. So that is the end of the budget. And I went too fast, so if anyone wants to cover anything, make any changes, let me know. Tonight. Because it goes to paper before public hearing. Not tomorrow, but before we meet again. Uh, right now the debt of the levy is at nine, eight, five. Would you guys say you were comfortable with it under ten? So it's higher than the nine-five it was, or the nine-five-seven, I think it was last year. But it's at a nine-eight-five, which is, I think, thirty bucks a year for most homeowners.
I think as long as people see their money going to good uses and to wrap their money in this.
Well, the only way to lower that levy is to cut any of the general fund items. Making any changes to the other funds is not gonna help, is not gonna change the levy.
So if we wanna be able to go to the paper, we've gotta do that airport thing. To be able to do the resolution on the airport thing before we actually put it in the budget?
No, we can always amend it, but if you hear, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I can do a little bit of rearranging and I'll come up with some money for the airport thing, if you definitely want me to put that in there. Are we wanting to spread it out over four years?
Mike's writing this one.
Well, I'm quite a dear.
He's taking a cut.
I saw him.
Yeah, I'm his my witness.
Sorry, Mike, you have a teaser.
I'm talking about that airport thing.
Okay, I'm, I'm between you and him, it's okay, I'll just hand you back.
I walked the whole property for the first time in a while this weekend.
So yeah, I will, I'll make sure that I get the airport in there.
So for starting twenty-two, or apparently what it called in Main Street?
This is coming year. We're in twenty-two right now, so we're gonna be starting fiscal twenty-three, July first.
What are the products that we can say that we are planning and we're going to start, or, or what are we? What's our...
What would we spend most of our money on? Do you want me to like present you with a list?
It'd probably be something that we can, you know, I mean, it'd be easy to have a discussion.
No, that's, that's a good idea, that's a good idea. A list of what we're, our primary, what our fiscal twenty-three dollars are going to, yeah. I will get that out, and I, I can do that in email this week.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll text you when I send it to you, those that don't check your email.
That'd make it easier to explain to residents.
Yeah.
Well, let me get to page thirty-seven.
Right, exactly.
And once I put this into the state's program, they combine, like, they combine fire safety and sanitation as public safety.
Right.
So you don't see a breakdown between what you spend on fire, as opposed to garbage pickup, they put it all together. I know that's weird, isn't it, that, that they do it with, so...
Because I would put the police with our sanitation.
They, well, they do, they put, they put police, sanitation, fire, animal control, it's all public safety. Yes, LeBron?
So, before we quit this discussion, I got two questions. What are, what are we doing with our Mid-Iowa Development people? What do we tell them to go get a grant for us? I think when we talk about paying that, paying that membership fee, because we're...
Well, they haven't started yet, and we're gonna have reps on that board.
Let's be the first to invite them down here and get a go.
Okay.
That'd be my, my thing, and then...
Because they haven't got the funds yet.
I can't remember two things.
Come on.
You know, I think I'm good. Normal.
So when are we gonna start doing something to Main Street, or Center Street, for beautification?
I have that in fiscal twenty-three. Um, I wanna start a committee here this spring, so we can work with a group, and I have a really nice, cool name that I got from the speaker down, of what this group would be, so it's not just Center Avenue Beautification, it's... I can't think of what they named it. They named it something, and I thought that would be then a group that could help, you know, you know, do any type of small town improvements and small town...
Cemetery.
Yeah. But our, our main project would be to start on Center Avenue.
I think those, I think those two ladies who were in the... That's on the agenda, it would be good people to have to head that up, just to get a start, because they did a good job. Locking in anyway. I don't want to manage your horses and get on your parking.
Matt had a good idea to manage your horse.
I'm gonna do it later.
Okay.
Yeah.
You don't want to try.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have to take the class, Matt? If you wanna write it correctly.
Anything else about the budget?
This, I will be having to send this to the paper by February fifteenth in order to meet the deadline before the public hearing, to meet our filing requirement in March with the state with the budget. So it is doing, this week I'll be putting it into the state's format, and then it'll be going to the paper.
I just thought of my other question.
Yes.
So there's all this infrastructure money that's floating around. And right now, the money for bridges is supposedly...
Astronomical.
Do we have any bridges we need to put in?
No, I got...
Do we have any bridges?
Over the top of Center.
I got, um, the, uh, the grant application process and a list of opportunities from Sydney Axie's office. I printed it out Thursday, it's four hundred and fifty-three pages.
Yes.
So I have, I printed it to four pages per page, and I, but I haven't gone through it all yet.
Do you want me to read it?
If you want to, I'm a desk.
No, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, is I've been kind of tracking that for some things, for some other purposes, that there's also room in money.
Yeah. Well, the initial one I got out, you know, I'm looking at water, and the initial one I got out doesn't have a lot for the small town wa, for waters.
Yeah.
No, and the only waters they have is for, you know, cleaning up the water, you know, or not laying pipe.
Hopefully water is a theme on the table.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to, I know Joe's not here, but he asks me once a week if there's any, and it's like, no, nothing for water, but there's a lot for...
Anyway.
Everything else.
Yeah, you can...
There is some for broadband.
If you want me to, well...
I can shoot you, I can send a show you the email, if you'd rather read it on the screen.
Might include... Yeah, yeah, go ahead and do that.
Because you know that to me, and you just download it as a PDF and... It is one of some pages.
Because she's the person we need to look at.
Yeah.
She's the hot number right now, as far as that dollar is concerned.
Okay, I will do that.
Anybody else have anything on the budget for the work session?
And I'm not saying you can't change it after I publish it, because we're only publicing, or publicing, publicizing, um, the first page that shows the breakdown, and the third, how much we're tax levied. I mean, there is some wiggle room in that, like I said, they lumped public safety together, so we could move funds from fire and police, and from police to fire, pretty, without neglecting what, negating what we published, published. I can't talk anymore, and I...
You're done.
Check it out.
I think a bridge for the library and film department. Can I have a motion to a jury?
What is it?
Second, Pam, Will?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.